...the prayer and the sacred place and we'll be for. Lord, thank you for this beautiful morning and, uh, Lord, as we think about, um, the calm and the peace that we have here in Little Creek County and just the sunshine and then, and the, uh, just the beautiful day that, uh, you've given us the day ahead that we have to enjoy and that you want us to enjoy, Lord. So, we're grateful for that. However, I, I think about, uh, those in, in North Carolina and Florida and they've been impacted and, and the lives lost and the, and just, uh, families that are grieving that need comfort. Uh, Lord, I just pray that you would put your hand upon them in those communities. Um, just the devastation that we see, uh, on the, on the nightly news. Uh, Lord, it's just, just impossible to, uh, to comprehend and thank you for all those who are generously giving of their resources and their time to help, um, those who have suffered this, this tragedy. Lord, we just, um, ask again that you, um, put your hand upon them and that we're resourceful people and, and there are so many people that, that will, will help and it's just the American spirit alive and well. Lord, again, just be with us this morning as we take up the business before us and in all things, we're grateful and give you the glory and honor in your son's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have any minutes? I don't see any CDT applications. Uh, so we'll just jump into Agro economy week review and I, I put that on air, uh, in anticipation that we might have any type of, uh, updates, but I would just comment on that that it went extremely well, well organized. Uh, I personally thank, uh, Dr. Brown for leadership in that, all the planning and all the hours that went into making that product, uh, that, uh, the success. It was, uh, well attended by MU, the local corporate vendors really stepped up, um, and, uh, so I just can't say enough about it. It, it, uh, I think it turned out really, really well. So, that's my, my thoughts briefly and, and, uh, hopefully we'll have an Ag three next year to consider. But, uh, I, I think it went real well and so I'll just open it up for comments.
I, I agree. I thought the addition of the, uh, agri brunch and, uh, the, uh, exhibits out in the outside and inside that they had with vendors was, was a real nice addition. You know, they, I didn't know they could take that show on the road, building barrels, uh, cooperates barrels out there, but they did and charred them and it was really neat to sit there and watch that. A lot of, uh, a lot of good things and a lot of things I didn't really even know, uh, much about that were, uh, being done here in Little Creek County. Kind of like, uh, there's a group from Bennett Springs that meets every week down there to do fly tying and they're just out there teaching next generations how to enjoy the recreation and keep building into that. So, uh, there's a lot of neat stuff.
I think it just shows us how broad, uh, MU is with their partnerships with their counties and all the educational stuff that they can provide to the county and just, we need to take better advantage of that as a county, I believe. And given that this opportunity to get out there is just a great resource.
Yeah, I think you're right, Dave. Uh, it's a, it is, I think it really surprised a lot of people to see just how much agriculture and agri related business things impact Little Creek County. There's a lot of dollars there, a lot. So, um, it's a big thing.
You know, agribusiness is one of the broadest things that we have around. It touches many things. It really does. That we, we, you just don't think about on a daily basis. And I think that the more we can work on that, the more we're grateful.
I agree. The speakers from like the Missouri Department of Agriculture that was there had some very informative programs, uh, the MU, uh, speakers, um, and just the interaction amongst the, all of those who, who attended, uh, maybe just makes a connection so that this person now knows that this exists and here's a resource that I didn't know was available and, and because of that one contact, maybe that leads to a second or, or more. And so I, uh, again, would just say that I think it was, uh, a very, um, very, uh, good event, uh, and profitable, if you will, for all those who attended. It was a, a good investment of time, uh, and, uh, very informative. So, let's see what Ag three looks like. Next on the agenda would be the nine-one-one center open house update. Uh, right now that's scheduled for October twenty-fourth at two P M. Um, there are invitations being, uh, drafted and I think the goal is to have those out here, um, what's today, eighth or ninth? Eighth, uh, to go in the mail on the tenth. Um, it will take place down in front of the nine-one-one. A lot of details are being worked out right now, um, but it looks like we're all set for October twenty-fourth at two P M. Okay. I'll jump into general county business. Looks like we're getting resurfaced out here on Second Street. Yeah, we had a call from City Eleven yesterday morning and, uh, they said they'd be there this morning and it'd be about a two-day project. So, from, uh, Second Street from Washington Jefferson is being milled up and, uh, and resurfaced and then restripped. And we really needed that out here, uh, desperately. Crosswalk was virtually invisible. Uh, so, it's good. It's good, good to see it. And our backlots are on, uh, may not get done this weekend, but they're scheduled to have our backlots sealed and striped.
Well, it looks like they did a great job over on the annex parking, making sure even the cracks that had a really nice seal to them. Yeah.
Yeah, I think they did a great job.
Good.
I think that's good.
So, last week, uh, I had thrown out some rough numbers like I have, um, almost weekly as we review the remaining ARCA funding and, um, I have a better understanding of that now. Linda had categorized it in a way that I hadn't noticed.
We were both right. That's the end game.
I was gonna give you credit, but, but that's okay. Uh, so, uh, Linda had, uh, had wanted to, for good reason, uh, on the building track it, um, separately from some of the other ARCA, uh, funding. And so therefore the number I was looking at that I thought had been halved was actually, there was a part dedicated to, to the building and, and getting it all finished. And then there was a remaining part that I think we loosely said is, is miscellaneous. So, uh, I think there's a consensus that, uh, right now, uh, as of nine-thirty, the ARCA balance was a million seventy-two thousand. And then we, with the known, uh, remaining balance with the whip, with the retainage and, uh, the, uh, last known change order, um, that I'm aware of is three hundred and thirty-three thousand. Uh, the Paragon balance is fifteen thousand, three seventeen fifty-nine. However, there's the credit that they, uh, have agreed to on the steps and on the, um, the doors, I believe. And so that hasn't been taken into consideration. We have open POs and we have just miscellaneous. So, right now, um, and this is loose numbers, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven eighty-four forty. However, we know that there's other, uh, items to be taken into consideration that are yet to be invoiced from the vendors on nine-one-one. And we, and we do know that the audit will come out of that. So, I'm gonna roughly go back and say we're probably around that five hundred thousand dollar amount. Uh, could be a little more, could be a little less, but right now we have about five hundred thousand that we need to invest. Um, you'd asked me about the roof last week, about hurting thing. I, I did hear back this week, uh, had a good conversation with, uh, with, I believe his name's Heath Barber from, um, Stiles Roofing and, uh, another phone call. I, I haven't received back, but I did receive back a phone call from him. And, uh, you know, went through a whole list of things that, that, uh, that they would look at, uh, essentially would, it would cost us, it looks like seven hundred and fifty to twenty-eight hundred dollars to receive a detailed report as to the condition of the roof. Um, uh, so they would come in and, and actually visually inspect it. Uh, and also they have, um, a way to actually see if there's any water underneath the roof, uh, that's there and, uh, then describe a couple of different options for, uh, remediation if, if needed. Um, so, a, a, a full roof, uh, I believe he said, uh, the, the number's loosely thrown out and I don't, I don't believe we need a new roof. We still have a year warranty left on this one. But a new roof's probably in the neighborhood of something a little less than three hundred thousand, uh, if, if it was necessary. I, I don't believe it is, but, uh, but some, uh, some treatment on it could extend the life with, uh, with a guarantee and, uh, that would be considerably less. So, I think the question becomes, do we want to, um, do we want to explore the other option? There, there, there's another roofing company that hasn't responded yet. Um, and we are in warranty with them for a year. Um, and depending on timeline and responses, uh, would we want to consider, uh, paying for that, um, that survey, if you will, to survey the condition of the roof?
I think what I, what I envisioned was, uh, I think they'd give it a code even staple warranty for over every many years. That's kind of what I would, yeah, I would do. You know, what, how long is an staple warranty if we re-code it or whatever you want to say? Kind of what I would consider.
Now, in order to really know what that would be, then, uh, they would, uh, ask for the, the, um, the survey to be conducted first. So, that they would know how to, how to proceed.
Here we were currently when we see what they're, what they're doing. It's my opinion.
I wonder if, uh, they would, uh, you know, I like, I'd like to hear from both of them, but if, I don't know. When you start paying for inspections, it's like, heck, oh, man, they're getting from every side now. It, uh, maybe not, that would roll into whatever costs that they would maybe do for a, uh, treatment or whatever. Might be a way to not have to pay for an inspection fee. You know, I kind of, I, I guess I kind of understand one hand is people just, they come, look at my roof, come up, if you don't, I mean, you're out of all those resources and then they don't do anything with it. Kind of like, okay, I can see it.
So, it's, it's probably a little more detailed than, um, than my walk-through. My, yeah, than, than a visual walk-through. Apparently there's an instrument that they can actually, I'm gonna call it like an X-ray for lack of better understanding, that they can actually see what's underneath, uh, the roof to see what, um, the spots might be and, and they'll do core samples on the roof, uh, whether it was glued down or just whether it's loose. So, it's more involved than just walking over the top of the roof and saying, okay, I think that's a bad spot and this is a bad spot. They'll actually do a more detailed analysis. So, I probably didn't explain it as well as I should have.
Another way to look at it is I'm going to add or do anything on top of somebody else's roof and they're going to, what it is. So, I understand.
Well, I will, uh, renew my efforts to have more information next Tuesday then because again, the timeline is, is quickly, um, approaching as to the decisions we need to, need to make. And he did say, I mentioned to him that we're thinking about getting the building, um, I would say watered through, but sealed again. And, uh, he asked what company and I mentioned, he said they work together pretty well, but sometimes they'll, they'll, um, they'll use a material that's like a silicone base maybe and they have to be careful that what they put on the roof and what they use, uh, wouldn't have any negative interactions. Uh, so that was just another little bit of information I gleaned from that that, um, I, I wouldn't have known. Okay. And, um, the, we tabled the bid last week from MTS regarding the, um, wash and seal of the exterior building and then their alternates. Any comments on that today? Uh, do we wanna push, push that out another week, uh, before we make a decision as we see what the roof might come in at? Because I think this is a little shy of two hundred thousand if you accept all of the amendments or the alternates.
Thirty, sixty-eight, one hundred, seventy, probably a hundred and fifty.
So.
Yeah, I think we probably.
Hold on that another week? Okay. The, um, the whip called, uh, the, the, um, portion of the lawn that was, um, needed addressed due to the, um, stone being laid there. Uh, they'll, they'll be here tomorrow to, uh, address that and get that cleaned up. And I want to, they have on nine-one-one is the, uh, Alex has sent, uh, from Paragon, sent back the plaque. And I kind of went through there and, uh, made some, uh, I thought a list and how it should be maybe on this side and this side. And there would be county officials, if you can read my, read my writing.
I guess I've ever, I always think I've seen that plaque that's out here, but I don't pay as much attention to it, I guess. Again, I may go look at it.
What I did, I mirrored it, mirrored it after, after that one. Reasonably, we could, um, reach a consensus on that and we can get that moving, moving forward.
I would like to make sure to get it moved.
Get a look at it and look forward. Okay.
No, I think that's, that's reasonable. Okay.
All right. And we'll just double check the spelling. So, once I give that to Alex, have him, um, draft it, send it back to us and then have all the, all the spelling, um, checked and. All right. Open it up. Any discussion?
Yep. The, uh, the nine-one-one, uh, open house. Want to discuss kind of some what they may look like, what may, what kind of contents would you want?
I mean, just in general terms, the way I see it flowing would be, um, there's been invitations extended to state government officials. And so we'd like to have a, you know, a keynote speaker, um, at the highest level of state government that we can, that we can, um, possibly expect to, um, to be here. Um, we haven't had a response from that. Uh, the question's been asked, the invitation's been sent through a scheduler to Governor Farson's office. Of course, we, you know, what that looks like. So, um, you know, we'd have, uh, you know, just a, I'd say a traditional invocation, um, offered. I will ensee it. Um, um, we, as, as a commission can draft what we would want, uh, the public to, to know about the project, you know, the funding, uh, how we, how we determined that was the best use. And, and, uh, I would assume that, you know, the contractor and/or architect might want to speak briefly. And then, uh, we'll have, um, you know, obviously, those who are working there, you know, uh, I, I suggested that you have, um, in promoting it, you have even someone that works there, uh, have the opportunity like during the, uh, the guided tours, if you will, um, you know, apron cutting. Uh, so I think there's a lot of details there that is kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah. I, I don't, just because, uh, we haven't, maybe would you be opposed to doing something semi-one-seventy-fifth anniversary type thing with it? It's, we're gonna be as clean as where we're gonna be or anything. It's gonna look, take the top, look like it's a, um, it could be a, I, I, and don't, I'm just being just thoughts. So, I'm pretty good at throwing those. A lot of those will probably not work. Kind of writing down it as a potential that, um, possible. Maybe a, maybe a, a, uh, a jazz band or something like that play a little bit there, prior people waiting, like ensemble or something. Yeah.
And it feels like that stair kind of felt like.
No, no, no. I.
You just thought about that. It's, uh, it's a opportunity to connect the two together and that component has been mentioned and plugged in. Uh, now to what extent, I, I really don't know. Uh, but, uh, all ideas are welcome. And I know everybody right now is just trying to formalize and finish those ideas on, on their own so that, so we can get it nailed down here quickly.
And I, I really haven't got much further to thought than just suggesting something like this other than what that could potentially look like. I, I don't think it, you know, getting closer on time, that's for sure.
Very close.
Yeah. So. That's what I thought. Good idea. Yeah. I thought high school, maybe they could, yeah, pull out some tunes from eighteen, what was, eighteen forty-nine? Might be some of that. No. Um, yeah, I, it's a very opportunity to have.
Sure. Do you have, uh, the equipment?
I do have. I was gonna.
Can we, can we count on that for that?
Yeah.
Cause we'll, we'll, we'll need to set that up.
Set that up.
No problem. We'll set chairs up out there and, and, uh, and, and get that, get your PA, you know, you got a couple speakers on.
Couple, lots of ways to do it.
Okay, good. Good. Good.
We will do that. No problem.
Good. We should have more of that next Tuesday.
Okay.
And all ideas are welcome. Okay. Linda, I guess, end of routine business there.
This one, normal edition.
Jack, does, uh, Chris Contractor send the LCR any photos, Chris Roden?
Uh, yes, he does. He also is the one who's posting all of our sports photos to the Facebook page, so.
I seen him out at, uh, Tolyville last Thursday and wondered, kind of stopped and visited with him, but, uh, I really didn't ask him if he was there in any capacity other than individual than someone, uh, had indicated the Facebook postings that I normally don't look at. I just don't do Facebook.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so Chris has done that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, Linda handed us the, um, and we need to vote on this. This is the, uh, voting delegates for our MAP Conference. Um, and I guess this is those who expressed an interest, uh, myself, Heather Officer, Linda Councillor, Jennifer Rafe, and Christie Carr. And so I would entertain a motion to approve that list as our voting delegates for our upcoming MAP Conference.
I may motion to approve this list for the delegates for, uh, Missouri MAP Conference here. They held in, like the Ozarks, I guess, so.
I was looking, I'm motion second to approve the voting delegate list for the MAP Conference. Any further discussion? Seeing that on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. I think we need to sign down there at the bottom as well.
Yeah.
And did, uh, did you have a chance to look at the warrants that were paid from last week? I don't think there was. Okay.
We received just an update on the insurance in relationship to the Mercy group crops and negotiations. They said they are still ongoing. They do still hope to have the agreement reached, but they are making notice that as of yet there isn't an agreement reached, so.
Is it taking longer this year with those emergency situation?
She stated that this has happened several years, but force, it's catching more notice in the news than what it has ever in the past. So it's becoming more of a highlighted issue than it was. But she's, um, she's saying they, they have to now hit compliances. So one of the compliances is letting us know that there's not been an agreement reached due to the date that it has come to. So now they're making notice. Still hoping to reach one.
Any indication on our renewal?
Um, yes, did I not follow that?
Um, Linda, if you did, I apologize, I overlooked it.
They said, um, I think it's two percent decrease in our premium. And then on vision, our state.
That what?
Then on vision, our state, and. And everyone.
Is this the one where you asked for like fifteen percent or sixty?
Yeah. It was, it was a two percent plus a twenty-five something. Did you find it?
I did not.
If you want to reset, I'll put it up.
Yeah, 'cause I'd like to check with, um, Christie's, if they have sales tax in Washington, yeah. So when you get that on the wood, the sales tax, or just, there's more, should they want?